Hi, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Finance and Ops Committee. It's Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, and we're in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. And it is 6:05. And so let me call the attendants. I'm here. And Mr. Claffey?
Present.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Present.
Okay. And then we have Mr. Gray, Dr. Andre, and Mr. Smith. So you guys can start.
All right, I'll get us started. So the CTE program is looking to actually purchase a few items. So the first one on the list is actually for North Star Cafeteria or CAF upgrades. They are looking to spend some of their money out of their special revenue account. And I'll go over the special revenue accounts that you have in front of you in a few minutes. So they did go ahead and ask for three quotes. They are recommending that we actually go with the lowest quote. So we're looking to go ahead and purchase some new cafe tables, some chairs for the office. They're thinking it will be a total up to $26,995. And this will come directly out of the CTE special revenue account, which is 91.2258. There should be six additional digits after that, but then it's 7100. They have plenty of money in the CTE special revenue account. And this is basically just to go ahead and do some new tables and chairs. It does sound like we haven't purchased new tables and chairs actually since they opened back in 2022, 2023.
Yeah, I noticed it's been a long time. I was just wondering, is this for the cafeteria that we see when we come in the building?
Yes, that is correct.
All right.
Yep, the cafe.
They must be really excited about getting new furniture after so long. Do you guys have any questions?
I just wanted to not to, for the record, I think it's 2002 to 2003. Because it's, I don't want the people to think, what do you mean that's old? It's not two years, 22 years, 23. Anyway, it's just not a big deal.
I didn't even pick up on that.
Oh.
I was here when it opened, so that's why.
I think I did say 22, 23. Thank you, sorry.
I want the public to know we're not replacing new equipment. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the purchase of new cafe tables and chairs from Intelligent Office Interiors at a cost of $26,995. The funding to come from CTE Tuition Special Revenue Fund Account 91.2258.71000.
Second their motion.
Thank you. And any comments or questions or anything? Okay, all right, so.
All those in favor?
Yeah, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, thank you, Neil.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Make sure we get the vote in.
It's nice to have someone remind me where I am. I forget so often. Okay.
All right, so the next one on the list, still for the CTE team, to go ahead and make an additional purchase. I guess I'll let Mr. Smith speak to this real quick. And again, the funding is going to come directly out of their special revenue account as well. I think just a friendly reminder, we had talked about the CTE program really coming up with some type of spending plan over the next couple of years to start to basically enhance some of their furniture and fixtures, equipment, et cetera, throughout the CTE program. So I think we're going to start to see some more of these purchases being recommended. Mr. Smith, do you mind giving some details?
Sure. So four years ago, the CTE program purchased a plasma machine. What a plasma machine is, it cuts steel, aluminum, basically any sort of metal, maybe not titanium, but all the lesser metals. But part of that process, it puts off a lot of fumes, a lot of heat. It can be toxic to the individuals that use it. So it's not something you want to use in open space, which is where it currently is. So I want to say, three years ago, we put an RFP out to hire an architect to assist us with CTE-type projects. And this is probably the first one that's really moved forward. And the architect is Harriman. And they've done a great job for us in other parts of the school district, as you probably know, our construction. So they want to design a ventilation system for the plasma cutting machine and just exhaust all the bad stuff outside.
Are they going to build it as well, or are they just designing it?
They're going to design it.
Okay, all right. Just wondering, when we first purchased the machine, were they, the person that put the order in, did they not know that they needed this hood? Or did they think it was going to be easier to get it?
Really unknown. I mean, it was a past CTE director. I really can't speak to whether she thought this would have to be done.
It just seems like a shame that it's been there for so long.
Yes.
So glad that we're getting it done. Do you guys, do you have any questions?
I just had a small question. Like, when we got this done, right? Kind of like what Ms. Lamphier was saying, how many people are actually using this?
So it's part of the, what the name of the program is.
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing program. So you have an instructor there. However, many students are enrolled in the course potentially.
Okay.
If I may, it's, so three years ago, or thereabouts, this piece of equipment was purchased with, I believe it came out of Perkins or CTE. And it's a very expensive machine. It's industry, the industry uses it all the time. At the time that it was purchased, we actually had very low enrollment. And we actually looked at giving the machine back because we had, we weren't using it. We worked with the state. They said, hold on to it. And then because we talked to industry partners as well, like, we're going to have to train students using that machine because it's going to be needed. In the last two years, we've hired a new manufacturing teacher. He's rebuilding that program. Again, we're still in contact with industry partners. So this hood is actually moving in the right direction. So we weren't using it. It was low enrollment, new teacher. The subscription for the classes is higher, and I think this is the next step. So it was underutilized, and I think it's going to be used. I wish we had the hood right now. Because when we think about the signage for the welcome center, like, I think of kids in this program designing that new sign. But not yet.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll make the motion. The motion is to approve the contract with Harriman for the design of a plasma machine hood installation at a cost not to exceed $15,400. The funding will come from the CTE Tuition Special Revenue Fund Account 91.2258.71000.
Second.
Thank you. All right, and so is all those in favor? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. You unanimous?
All right, I think Mr. Smith's going to move forward to his recommendation for the roofs. Go ahead.
Okay, we, as you know, we hired ARM consultants to do assessments of a number of our roofs. And those include the two high schools in Amherst Street. All of those were, the roofs were built in 2004, 2002, and 1999 for Amherst Street. So they're all well over 20 years old. And they came up with a number of repairs that will extend the life of those roofs. So each high school will cost about $6 million to replace, which is an awful lot of money. So this is a small amount to probably buy us another five years or so with those roofs and give the city a chance to recalibrate their spending plans. So we had ARM bid out the work, received bids from three companies, North Star Viking and A&amp;M Roofing. And Viking was the low bid to do the work at a total of $88,415.05. I always wonder when there's 5 cents or something like, can't they just knock that off? But that's, that's just me. So I would like to recommend that we award the roofing repair work at Amherst Street Elementary, the North High School, and the South High School to Viking Roofing of Hollis, New Hampshire, in amount of $88,415.05. And I further recommend a contingency of $5,000 for a total of $93,415.05. Funding will come from the school district's deferred maintenance account.
You guys have any questions? Okay, I just looked, I was looking at the deferred maintenance that you gave us earlier in the year. And it says $150,000 was put aside for roofing, but that also includes Stellows. Is, I don't know if the GSSBC has moved forward with that yet.
It has.
Okay, so they used about the rest of it? So this is about, how much we have right now, the 93,000?
No, they, so they use construction money.
Okay.
So bonded money, and that's going to pay for that. Again, that's repairing it as opposed to replacing it.
Okay.
So this is strictly out of our deferred maintenance account. And we have excess money left after this.
Okay, all right. If anyone has any question, doesn't have any questions, then I'll make the motion to award the roofing repair work at Amherst Street Elementary, Nashua High School North, and Nashua High School South to Viking Roofing of Hollis, New Hampshire in the amount of $88,415.05 with a project contingency of $5,000 for a total of $93,415.05. And funding will come from the school district's deferred maintenance account.
So moved.
Okay, and since there are any questions or anything, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, three of us again. Thank you. You too, thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, are we ready to move forward? All right, so before I get to the documents that I handed out, I think let's go ahead and just talk high level from a budgetary standpoint. And then also, we'll go over the budget transfers. So a couple of reports in front of you that are given on a monthly basis. So the fiscal year 2025 Department Expense Detail Report, kind of those first five pages in the next set of documents that are in front of you. If you skip all the way to page four of five, so in total, we as a district have used about 74% of our overall budget. We're now 10 months through this fiscal year. So from an overall total standpoint, that seems fairly reasonable. It's actually slightly lower, excuse me, than where I would expect us to be this year. Being 10 months through kind of a 12-month cycle, you would think about 83% is what you would see that we're using. And some of that probably has to do with some of the open positions that we've filled throughout the year, benefits maybe not being used, and then the pay through the summer. Well, we'll talk about kind of line by line detail when we get to the overall forecast later, if that's okay. All right, great. All right, so if we can hop to the transfer reports, so quite a bit of transfers this month. You're probably going to see a similar pattern next month in June. And then hopefully, it will phase out in July. So just remember, this is the time of year that all of the schools, the departments, are really taking a look at their overall budget. Where do they still have money available? Where should they be spending for the rest of the year? So a lot of these transfers that are in front of you are moving either money out of educational supplies into furnitures and fixtures, or even some miscellaneous supplies, computer supplies, et cetera. So if you want, I think there's quite a few in front of you. I wasn't going to go line by line through each of them. I thought I'd call out some of the bigger ticketed ones, if that's okay. I don't think we necessarily approve all of these individually. It's more of a consolidation. So I'll go to journal entry 163, or Budget Transfer, excuse me, 163. We're basically taking about $5,000 out of mileage and postage. And we're moving it to furnitures and fixtures. So this is for Nashua North. So they're moving some money that they had left over in their mileage account, in their postage account, $1,000, and then $4,000, and they're moving it into furnitures and fixtures. So if you're following along, I'm on page 28. And I'll pause for a second just so you can get there. I'm seeing page 28 of 73 on my side.
It's the third, the third page of the transfer.
One of the transfers, yeah. All right, any questions on that specific transfer? Can I continue down? We're good, so thumbs up, okay. Let's see. So there is a $3,000 transfer in there, actually, from District Office. We went ahead and moved an additional $3,000 over to cover the Student Activity Audit. I've been mentioning the audit. We're anticipating that invoice for 2024's Student Activity Audit to come in. In order to pay the invoice that's coming, we needed to move $3,000. Let's see, a couple of their big ticketed ones. I know there's a couple of big transfers in there. Of course, friendly reminder, anything over $1,000 in this time of year, there's quite a few. We usually move over. All right, I'm going to go to page 39. Up at the top, it says Nashua Athletics, and it's budget entry 173. $5,909. This basically is just moving the money out of the high school, one high school into the other high school's budget for the rentals to go ahead and cover the excess hockey rental fee. So again, North and South is split up. So we're going ahead and moving money out of, I should know these by heart, out of South into North, or excuse me, out of North into South. All right, the next one, another big transfer from Athletics. So this is Lisa's team, Ms. Chingris's team, going ahead and moving money throughout the year that she didn't use in rentals or officiants, and moving the money over to miscellaneous equipment to go ahead and purchase some football equipment or potential equipment. So a pretty big transfer there that we did for her. All right. All right, so the next one, I'm seeing page 42 of 73. So this was a transfer from District Office. So this is budget entry 171 for $77,000. So we've gone ahead and taken $77,000 out of, 99 is district-wide. So we're taking $77,000 out of district-wide contract services that we didn't need. And we're moving about $17,000 into the Student Activity Audit, and then another $60,000 into contract services related to special education. There is one in here, so if you look at page 45 of 73, again, just picking out some of the big ticketed items. So if you look at journal entry 229, this is a journal entry of $25,000, excuse me, budget transfer, not journal entry. A budget transfer of $25,000 coming out of full-time wages, being moved into contracts, service fee. I think you folks might have voted last night on the civil rights individual. So we utilized a staffing firm to go ahead and find us that placement. And with that came a staffing fee percentage for first year's compensation to find that individual. The good news is, we had this person budgeted in this year's budget for that full salary. So we basically just took the salary that we didn't use and moved it into the fee line because this individual will be here for the month of June, I believe.
Okay.
If I'm going too fast, or there's questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. All right, let's go to the curriculum one. So it's page 52, budget entry 215. So we needed to go ahead and move some money out of $6,1800 for the curriculum team. So we met with the assistant superintendents, and there were some educational supplies that we wanted to go ahead and purchase. We had remaining money in subscriptions. So we're basically doing a budget transfer out of one line item into the other. This, this is actually a little interesting. We usually look at everything as the first two digits from a roll-up standpoint. So where they're actually taking money out of the $6,1830 account and moving it to the $6,1135. In the $6,1249, they technically didn't need to do this budget transfer on the backend. But when the curriculum office or any of the departments are pulling their individual budget, sometimes it looks cleaner if they're actually moving the money versus looking at that roll-up.
I have a question on this one. It's just, the question is just about the accounting unit. Because I see it's 91.1.99, and 99 is for the district. What is the last four numbers, the 2212?
Yep, so there is a sheet in your packet that I had given you. I think at one point, you had asked me for, what are the different building codes? So I shared kind of a little cheat sheet that we've put together. So the way that the accounting string goes is 91 is the department, which is us as a school district. 1 is always our budget. And then 99 always relates to whatever the school or the department is. So 99, if you look at your sheet, is district-wide. If it said 03, that would be South High School. If it said 04 there, that would be North. You know, Charlotte Ave, for instance, is 13. If it showed 13 there, that would be Charlotte Ave. The 2212 is then your program code. So most of the accounting within the operating budget always has your 91.1. And then it usually has your department, which is a two-digit, and then your four-digit program code. So 2212, I have the report, just in case you were going to ask for an example. So 2212 is actually, 2212. So it's district-wide improvement of instruction, which makes sense because this is the curriculum department. So this particular subset of accounts is related to the curriculum department themselves. So anything related to curriculum should be under 91.1, 992212. And then your account is after that. So your account being 61830. So that's your subscription line.
Okay. Now, the line 61135, educational supplies. Do you know, like offhand, what type of, is that just going to the schools? Or is it going to something else? Is it just for like things like desks and books? And is there any big-ticket items there? Is it just a large amount because it's going to be broken down to all the schools?
Yeah, so this would be for a specific curriculum that is being purchased. So it wouldn't be split out between the schools. When we go ahead and do a curriculum purchase, we usually, I'm making an example up, but say we do like Arika Math, and it's $100,000 for the year. That's basically what they're going ahead and purchasing. So it looks like they are doing some testing materials and then some additional educational supplies.
Is, it's such a large amount, has that gone through the curriculum committee?
I was just going to ask.
So it absolutely was. I think there was an issue related to the budget last year, if we go back to the overall curriculum budget. I think some of the money that should have been in educational supplies to start ended up being budgeted to subscriptions. But when I worked with Mr. Poska and his secretarial staff, what they're planning to purchase with this was included in the overall budget.
Okay, all right, that's good, thank you. I don't know yet.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gray. I'm still confused at what we're purchasing, you know? I, like, is there a specific thing that we're purchasing? Or is it just a curriculum to be determined at some former time from last year's budget that ended up in this year's budget that is still a secret?
So let me clarify, because there's no secret going on here. So I think whatever I just said must have been misunderstood. So let me step back. So this journal entry here is a transfer. And again, the team didn't even have to do this, this transfer. So with that being said, this is a transfer out of the curriculum budget, out of the subscription pot of money. So they're moving $171,000 out of subscriptions. And they're moving it into educational supplies through 61135 and 61249, which is your testing materials. What I said was, when this budget was originally built, I believe, if we look at the numbers, the overall educational supply original budget was $451,310. The original budget for subscriptions was $454,000. So last year, back several months ago, when the budget was initially built, they went ahead and said, okay, based off of their needs assessment, we need X amount of dollars in educational supplies and in subscriptions. What I said to clarify is, my understanding, talking to Mr. Poska, is some of the money that was originally budgeted in subscriptions should have been budgeted in educational supplies. And that is why this transfer has to happen. In addition, what they are purchasing, and I think Dr. Andre wants to jump in, my understanding is they are purchasing testing materials and educational supplies.
So we'll be more than happy to supply. There's no new program that needs to be approved. So we'll send a memo with the detail, but it could be just a refurbishment, but nothing that needed to be approved by the curriculum subcommittee. So we'll have a more detailed memo for you for our business meeting in two weeks.
Perhaps, may I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, please.
But because the, the first number is the same, you didn't even have to tell us about it.
That's exactly, so it's just a.
The second thing is, I want to say, my guess is, because we had a vacancy, in a sense, for the last two months of last year, there might have been some confusion about how that money was spent on programs that were already approved.
And that, that's.
And then you're clean, this is just a cleanup of a mess that was transparent last year, right?
Yeah, so again, it's just, I think we.
I can't remember what it was a year ago. I just don't remember what the program.
Right, so it's not a new program that we're bringing in. It's just that aspect that, there's nothing that would have been needed to be approved by the curriculum department. So again, to Mr. Gray's point, and as Mr. Claffey said, it's still in the larger curriculum budget. It's just. It's just moving into um a subcategory from there. But there is no new programs coming in. It's just really um being able to replenish and and move forward around some of the testing materials or supplies. But as I said, um be more than happy to get a more detailed um memo for the full committee in two weeks.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Dr. Andre. And thanks for um taking the time to explain it to us and make sure that it was clear. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Do you want me to move forward or?
I was just saying, I'm still not clear. Um I have no clue what these educational supplies. I understand that you're gonna tell us in two weeks and it doesn't need to be approved through um the curriculum committee. I understand what you're saying. I I hear the words that you're saying. I just don't know what the money was being spent on. And I think that if you come to FNO and say, okay, well, we made this transfer, maybe you would be excited about what it was. So you would know exactly what it what it was that was approved in last year's budget.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, the thing is that um this is probably my fault because I should be looking at this as a chair of the committee. I should be looking at it ahead of time. So if I had a question like this where I wanted specific information, I I should have asked ahead of time. I mean, I I if they don't have the information right now, they can't give it to us.
So I I again, I think the the aspect of more than happy, I can't answer that question specifically tonight. Um but I also, like, for the excitement is, for us, this is a routine tran- transfer. So there's nothing to say, hey, we're moving in this direction. I'm so excited to transfer a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars because we're bringing something new. This is just for us more operational of this is how we have to move forward in replenishment. So it's more a transaction as opposed to, I know it's a big number, but for us, it's more transactional into the larger aspect of it. But again, we'll be more than happy to um provide that memo for you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right, so if we jump down to uh page fifty-five, which is journal entry one-sixty-six. So this is a transfer out of contract services for twenty thousand dollars. Uh and we're moving an additional twenty thousand dollars into contract services for special education.
So so the top number is the district office accounting unit? And the bottom number is the special education accounting unit, right?
Yes, sorry, didn't mean to overtalk you. So yes, nine-nine is district office, or excuse me, district-wide. Twelve-sixty is actually ESL. I know this one by heart. So twelve-sixty is ESL, which is our ELL program. So we're taking twenty thousand dollars out of their contract service line uh because they didn't need those funds. And we are moving it to uh special education contract services, which is a line that we've been talking about throughout, and I'll cover that more.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, so the next one, uh page fifty-six, the one right after it, budget entry two-eleven. So again, we are moving fifty-eight thousand six hundred dollars out of wages full-time. We are moving another ten thousand dollars out of contract services uh ELL. And we are moving it into a couple different various accounts. So we're putting fifty thousand dollars into special education contract services again. Um you probably can see a theme here. There's a lot of transfers going into special education uh contract services. We're really looking at if there's open positions that we didn't fill, um we're able to move their wages. As I mentioned last month, we're not able to move the benefits. So fifty-one one hundred is your full-time wage line. Uh we're also moving money into uh staffing services. So nine-nine district-wide and then eleven-ninety-seven, eleven-ninety-eight um is our staffing service lines. So those staffing service lines are for our ESS partners uh to cover some of the substitutes at the elementary level and middle school level. All right. If we look at, I guess, real quick, uh sixty-one, page sixty-one, two-oh-three, budget entry, again, another CTE journal entry, uh excuse me, budget transfer. They're moving money out of a whole bunch of different lines into educational supplies. Um seems like they didn't need the money in their travel line, their contract service line. Again, this is what most folks were um relate to as kind of the spend-down period to go ahead and utilize their funds for this fiscal year. So they're moving it into their educational supply lines at the CTE level. Same thing with the next page, uh budget entry two-oh-two, same thing. Uh they're moving quite a bit of money, um a couple thousand dollars out of their equipment repairs and maintenance over to some educational supplies. The next one, look at page sixty-six, journal entry one-ninety-seven. Moving some money uh from the North High School educational supply line over to miscellaneous equipment. Uh it looks like they're gonna go ahead and purchase some J Pro Gym Glide um equipment. All right, the next one, page sixty-seven, uh budget entry one-ninety-two. Taking thirty thousand dollars out of contract services and moving it into, again, staffing services for uh ESS, um total of thirty thousand.
This is the staffing company that we hired to cover the substitute teachers, right? Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Yes, that is correct.
Right, thanks.
All right, the next one, probably the biggest one in here, so page sixty-eight. Um and that's uh budget entry one-ninety-one. So this is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer. So we are moving five-hundred-thousand dollars of wage money into contract services. Now again, most of this, uh four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars is being moved into contract services, special education. And then thirty thousand dollars is being moved into our legal line uh for some legal invoices that have come in.
Um Ms. Ray, I'm just wondering, is this, um would this transfer be um included in the in the totals we have for the 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 year-end report?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. So all of the transfers that you have in front of you took place during the month of April. The reports that are run as of the end of April in my forecast that I did for May, um all of this is included in these high-level numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Uh page sixty-nine, same thing, uh budget entry one-eighty-seven. Moving five-hundred-thousand dollars out of um uh full-time wages and moving it into contract services for special education. As you probably can see, um there's been some questions about kind of the the accounting coding. So the nine-nine-nine-nine-nine is basically a placeholder account to go ahead and pull that lump sum of wage money out of there uh to go ahead and transfer it into to special education contract service. In order to move wage money, we have to do this basically placeholder of the nine-nine-nine-nine-nine. Um otherwise, we would have to go through each department, each um program level, and individually select the wages. From an efficiency standpoint, it doesn't make sense. So if you go ahead and move it from the nine-nine-nine-nine-nine, that rolls up to our overall reports.
Oh, that's great. Thanks for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Um is there, the re- is there reason why there's two of them, the five-hundred thousand? Is that kind of the limit that you can move?
So five-hundred thousand is usually the max limit that we want to move in one budget entry. Um right now, where we're getting to the end of the year, and the theme has been contract services and out-of-district tuition seem to be the two items that we're running over budget. That is why you're seeing these transfers. I'm starting to forecast and work with the special ed team uh on a weekly basis to say, what do we need to pay now? What are we paying in the month of May? And what are we gonna end up paying in the month of uh June and then July before the books are closed?
Yeah, I noticed when I was looking at the month, the month of um April, that we still had around twenty-six million dollars in wages that was unspent. Um so even though we're moving this huge amount of money, it's still only a small percentage of the money that we have because we weren't able to hire people, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. Yep. Yep. The reason we're able to actually move this money from the forecast that I have done uh is because there were open positions. We weren't able to hire those individuals. We're able to hire, we're able to go ahead and move those wages. Again, we're not able to move the overall benefits.
So when we um when we had done the budget for next year, did we put less money into wages and more money into the contract services? Just assuming that we wouldn't be able to hire people ourselves?
Good question.
Or is that, um or do you think that we'll have to do these kind of transfers again next year? I I know, I'm sorry, if you're not prepared for the question, it's okay.
I am more than happy to answer it. Um so a couple things I would say related to the budget for fiscal year twenty-six. I think it was very clear through the budget presentations that myself and Dr. Andre did, that I continued to say, contract service and out-of-district tuition are the two items year over year that we continue to overspend and that we should put more money in those line items.
Okay.
In the operating budget related to those two line items, contract service and out-of-district tuition for fiscal year twenty-six, we did add some additional money there. I think it was between two-hundred and three-hundred thousand. My original proposal was that we move about five-hundred to six-hundred thousand in each of those lines in addition for next year. Because of the overall budget, when we came to the table and proposed a three-point-five, we had taken contract service and out-of-district tuition, I think, down to about um, I think it was like six-point-three million, so six million three hundred thousand for out-of-district tuition. And then we increased contract services. We also went ahead and put a pretty substantial amount of money into special revenue, special education for next year. There's about one-point-two million dollars that I've already said we should anticipate to spend next year to try to cover some of this. I think I share, let me, I guess, answer the other piece and then I'll say what I was gonna say. From a wage standpoint, we did not decrease the wages if there was an open position with a contract service person in there this year. That'd be a budget disaster.
Okay.
So from an overall FTE standpoint, I'm making up numbers, but say there's fifty open positions, right? And if there's thirty contract service people, the net of that would be twenty. You don't want to budget only twenty for next year. So we're anticipating we should hire those open positions. I think similar to what we saw this year, it's gonna be tough to hire some of these more specialized positions. And contract services is not going away, and we have to provide the services.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi. I know that was a lot of information. I'm sorry, but I try to be transparent. I think I share all that just to say, like, as we move to the budget, right? We're moving into kind of final approvals and stuff. I still think we, as a district, need more in our operating budget related to special uh education, contract services, and out-of-district tuition.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Daniel Lambs.
So not knowing the future, we'll still be able to move the FTEs that are not hired and not paid out of the fifty-one hundred line into that to help us offset that as we're doing today.
Can you say that one more time, so I make sure I understood your question?
So we have set a number. Um, you know, we won't know, we know what we asked for. We know how much we asked for in the fifty-one hundred line for wages for full-time um staff.
Yep.
But what we don't know is how many FTEs we will actually be able to hire and maintain and retain throughout the year. So will we take the balance of that and move it into the special revenue? Uh I mean, not into this, into the contract services and special education as we are today. That is our standard process.
Yep.
Thank you.
So it has always been kind of the standard process of like the April timeframe that we, as a district, step back and say, how many open positions did we not fill? But there's a contractor here. And we start to move money out of wages into contract services. So unless we, as a district, hire all our open positions on our own, I don't, I don't ever see us doing away with that process. I mean, it's, you know, it would be great if we had a plethora of people at the door saying, we're coming to work as a school psychologist and we didn't need, you know, contract services. But unfortunately, I think everybody is struggling to find some of those specialized positions.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um let me just scroll through the last couple. I think that's everything from a budget transfer standpoint, from a high-level standpoint. So I'm gonna, if we're good, I'm gonna, oop.
I just wanna understand. I was curious what a J Pro was, so it looks like it has something to, and I'm sure Dr. Andre knows, being an expert on volleyball. So it looks like it's, I'm just wondering, the J Pro Glide goes in the gym, I'm guessing, but it doesn't come out of the athletic budget? Comes out of the school equipment budget? Is that just the way it is?
So it's coming out of the athletic budget, but out of their uh equipment line?
Let me do a fine.
Oh, no, you don't have to check. I just uh
So it's still within the athletic budget, but it would come out of their equipment line?
That's fine. I don't know why, when I, I know, cause I saw the principal's signatures and not uh leases. That's why I was curious.
Principal oversees the overall roll-up of the building.
That's an expensive piece of equipment, I'll tell you, for, for, it looks like a, it's a pole and a wheel and a mount.
You're welcome. All right, so I'm gonna move over to uh the items that I handed you. Um so
Ms. Gray, is it okay if we make the motion to approve the transfer report first?
I always forget that. Sorry.
Yeah, I always forget too, if I'm asking. Um okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five April transfer report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And um all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, um let's see, Ms. Claffey, okay, so we're done with motions. The last, next one we need is to adjourn, but we have to do this first, so. Sorry, we gotta do the forecast first, the most important piece, probably. All right, so the information that I handed to you, so if you look at, uh there's kind of a one-pager with some items on it. Um I kind of had shared briefly through the meeting. So that has all the school building codes on it. This is kind of a cheat sheet. It's this page, if you can see what I'm holding up. Um it's after the special revenue accounts. Um so that just has some helpful information that kind of was created when I first started to say, what are the, what are the school uh department codes? Fiscal year, friendly reminder, July first through June thirtieth. So I'll move past that one. Um Ms. Lampier had asked me for the special revenue uh reports and balances. So I did go ahead and print a copy of all the special revenue balances as of April thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. I handed you folks a copy of those. I just wanted to kind of point out some information, just in case individuals are not aware. So we, as a school district attached to the city of Nashua, they actually post our financial reports every single month. Um Regan, I shared an email with you yesterday. I don't know if you saw it.
I did see it and I tried to open it on my phone. I don't know if it was cuz I was using a phone, but I wasn't able to open them.
Okay.
Or maybe just cuz I'm computer illiterate, I'm not really sure, but I, it's nice to know that they're there. Someday I'll be able to open them maybe.
So if you go to the city of Nashua website directly under their financial section, there is a monthly financial reporting section and it has not just school, it has all the departments related to the city. So um, it has operating, it has special revenue, has the trust funds, it has way more information probably than you ever wanna know. But if you're bored one night, uh, it is out there. I'd be happy to show anybody where to get them. So I am more than happy to at some to, at some point in the future, do a deep dive on the special revenue accounts if you would like. I think for today's meeting and uh Regan, you had mentioned it, you had asked for these balances, but it wasn't an agenda item today, so I wasn't necessarily gonna go kind of line by line through it. From a high level standpoint, I would just share that if you flip to the one that says two, two, five, seven, special education local, it's page thirteen of fourteen, so the second to last page from the end. This is our special revenue, special education account. This account's going to be pretty important to us as we talk about the forecast. And again, those two line items, contract services and out of district tuition that continue to be over budget. We're gonna start to move some money out of operating or some expenses into special revenue. Okay. So if you want a deeper dive session or like a working session at some point related to special revenue, I'd be more than happy at some point to put it on the agenda if you wanna let me know.
Yeah, that would be great.
Kinda work through it.
I, I like that a lot. I, I, you know, I hate that I don't know all this stuff already. Um, but you know, being on the board is a learning experience, that's for sure.
It's probably good you don't know it. You're trying to take my job, Regan? I don't know about that.
So I love that.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I, I love that request and I just think that it, it would help in, help us to understand. I really um appreciate that you take time to do this. I do not want your job to deal with money, to deal with the finances, how you run the budget and bring it so close. I, I do want to let you know, I do honor and respect that because it is not a job that most could do, you know? So thank you for that. Um, and anytime you wanna put it on the agenda, if we can allow it, to just teach, teach us so we understand more, that we can explain more and it'll help us when we're asking for things. You know what I mean?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I don't, Regan and I work together maybe in July or August, you know, when, when we get through closing this fiscal year and through the budget cycle, maybe that would be a good time to kind of do a working session, a deeper dive, if that's okay.
Yeah, and of course, if there's any questions that um, you know, that, that Mr. Claffey or Ms. Daniels-Williams have, we could definitely address that too at the same time, you know? It's, it's a lot. Um, so, yeah, that'd be great.
Perfect. All right, so let's look at the big legal sheets of paper that I handed you all this evening. Um, so this is, again, my forecast uh for the month of April, uh, excuse me, for the month of May. From an overall forecast standpoint, just remember, this is kind of a snapshot in time. This is as of right now, what I'm anticipating we will spend uh based off of some trends and some actuals between now and the end of this fiscal year. So I'll kind of run through each section. If there's a question, feel free to, to pause me. So first section, your fifty ones, so salary and wages, every year we pretty much spend just about very close to that. Uh, you'll see in the summer escrow, there, there is a placeholder. We do pay the teachers through the summer, so that is why you see about nine million dollars sitting in summer escrow. But everything else, for the most part, we'll probably spend the budget or fairly close to the budget. And again, based off of those budget transfers we talked about earlier, those budget transfers um are already reflective within this overall forecast. All right, the next section fifty twos, which is our fringe benefits. Again, friendly reminder, ninety-nine percent of this, if we do not use it, does go back to the city. So the only line item I'll call out for now is educational assistance. Definitely the, the teachers' union and the team are, is using the educational assistance line. I think we'll have a little bit of money left over there this year. But we'll see, uh, May and June are usually the, the heavier times that we get some of those requests cuz folks are just finishing some of their, their classes that they're being reimbursed for. All right, professional and technical services. So this line in total is showing that we are over budget. Uh, but this is again where your contract service sits. Sorry about that. So let me just point out a couple of line items and then we'll jump down to contract service. Uh, so you can see accounting and auditing fees. Um, I've been saying we're gonna go ahead and pay for the twenty twenty four student activity audit. So you see eighteen thousand sitting in summer escrow. I'm waiting for that invoice to come in. We should have it probably in June or at some point in July.
Um, I'm sorry, I got lost. What, what line are you looking at?
That's okay. Give me a second to cough. Uh, the fifty threes, professional and technical services, so the third section down, and I'm looking at accounting and auditing services.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next line item within this section is legal services. We spend every single year over in legal. So as you saw, there was a budget transfer throughout to cover some of those expenses. Um, let's see. Pupil support services, a little bit over, but nothing drastic. Uh, contract services. So contract services, I'm estimating right now, from an overall roll-up standpoint, that we're gonna be about one point two million dollars over budget. Again, as you saw, we were able to move some of the wage money into that line to offset it. And I'm working extremely closely with the special education department to make sure we have a close eye on this number, if it's going to fluctuate anymore than what we're anticipating right now. Again, we could utilize the special revenue account to offset some of the cost. So I will continue to work with that team very closely over the next six weeks before we close out this fiscal year. Any questions related kind of to that section? I feel like we've talked about contract service quite a bit this year. I'm not surprised that it's over budget. So we will continue to, to monitor it, so hopefully there's no large surprises.
I don't, I don't have any questions. It looks good.
I mean, it doesn't look good, but yeah.
I, I understand why.
You understand it. We have, we have money to cover it, so that, it does look good. All right, the next section fifty fours, which is uh property services. Um, so this is most of the section related to electricity, gas, heat, uh HVAC. So this is mostly like your plant operations side of the house. They pretty much spend most of their money. So I don't think we'll have much of anything left over in that category at the end of uh this fiscal year. Nothing major to point out, uh, no huge discrepancies. All right, fifty fives, other services, so that last big section at the uh bottom of that first page. So this is where um transportation sits and out of district tuition. So it doesn't look pretty, but again, we have some wages to cover it. We have some other areas that we didn't end up spending money, so we're able to go ahead and offset some of those expenses. So regular and special education transportation, at this point from my forecast, I think we're gonna be a little bit over in special education transportation services. This is a mix of McKinney-Vento transportation and special ed transportation. The good news is we do have some money that I'm forecasting right now related to regular transportation to offset some of that. But I will keep a close eye on it. Again, next month, we'll have one more month of data to understand if we will be or how much will be over related to special education, special ed transportation services. All right, tuition out of district, again, working with that team, with the special education team. Our, our original budget was about six million dollars this year. Seems like that's been our budget the past two years. As I mentioned prior, my suggestion for next year, from a budget standpoint, is definitely to increase this. I'm forecasting right now, we'll spend about seven point one million dollars in this line. So we do have, again, money that we're able to transfer in to offset this cost. I will continue to work close with the special education team, the out of district tuition team. If we need to start to move more money over to special revenue, special education, we have some money available there. So again, I'm keeping a close eye on it.
Um, so just, just to be um clear, so the six billion dollar in the budget line there, that reflects the, the one million that was moved over from the wages already?
So all the way over to the far right-hand side where it says budget. So the original budget for this particular line, when we first set up the budget uh at the start of the year, was six million dollars.
Okay.
With budget transfers that we've done and the forecasting that I think we'll spend for May, June and the summer, in the column that says actual year to date, which is four columns to the left of that budget column, I'm saying, I'm anticipating we'll spend about seven point one million dollars in total.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the next lines are supplies and materials. Um, I'm gonna flip to the second page. So for the most part, this is where your educational supplies are, testing materials, your books, periodicals, subscriptions, et cetera. We usually, as a district, spend most of the money there. I've been working closely with the schools, as you saw tonight, lots of budget transfers, moving money out of some of the educational supply lines into other lines, furnitures and fixtures or vice versa. Showing a little bit of money possibly left over there in that section in total. But as of now, I'm anticipating we'll probably spend ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of that overall budget. Trying to pause a little bit cuz I know I'm throwing a ton of detail at you, so I apologize. All right, sixty eights, which is other expenses. I think this line always throws everybody off cuz it's a negative, right? So it really is the indirect cost, which is the indirect cost that is related to the grants, the federal grants that we draw down on every month. They give us a small percentage back. Um, so this looks like a negative, sometimes referred to as revenue. Basically just offsets our bottom line, so it's money coming in almost like as a indirect, it's an indirect cost fee from the federal grants. I think we'll actually be right about on target. Uh, we might even collect slightly more than what we originally anticipated just based off of the grant billing at this point.
Um, Mr. Gray, I was just looking at this and seeing that they, the amounts that comes, the, the amounts that come in every month vary like a lot. Is that just because of the way the billing cycle works and stuff like that? Or is it cuz there are different grants or?
Yep, great question. Um, so it's kind of twofold, as you mentioned. It depends on the grant and then it depends on the billing cycle. Now, you can see, sorry, I missed that header. March. So you can see in March, I believe, we collected about fifty five hundred dollars. The reason that is so much lower than the two months prior to that January is we had to do a state report for IDEA, which is the special education grant. And that, that IDEA grant document that the state required wasn't approved in that month. So that's why, and that's a pretty substantial grant. So that's why the month of March, well, February and March was so low. So starting again in April, we started to bill on that IDEA grant. So you'll probably start to see the next couple of months, those bigger dollar amounts coming in, which is why I budgeted about twenty-five thousand dollars coming in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The, the state stops us um at a point, if the reporting, if there's certain reports that are not filled out, they stop us to say, okay, you can't draw down on the grant, no more billing until the, this documentation basically is provided.
Okay, okay.
Have a question about that.
Yeah, go for it.
So how do we maintain that from not happening? Because like I said, it kind of like did, um, what is this? March catch it up?
Yeah, so it, it gets caught up, right?
Not March, April, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we, we're not losing money just from a timeframe standpoint. We're not getting it every single month in a perfect world, like we should be, right, realistically? So I think your question was, how do we stop that or how do we make sure we don't do it again? Make sure we have all federal uh reporting completed in a timely manner, so. And there's a lot of federal grants. So it was just, A, the reporting that they had asked us for was a little bit newer than what they've asked in the past. Anytime you do those state reports, there's a lot of data and stuff that needs to be pulled together. And I think as folks are aware, we have a newer district accountant, so there's been a lot of training, training this individual how to do it. She's done a phenomenal job. So it's just making sure all the state reports that come in, we're going ahead and filling out all the documentation. So we're not losing money. I don't know if that's a concern. We're not losing money. We're still getting it. We um went ahead and forecasted and budgeted that we'd get about two twenty. We'll, we'll still get that. We actually might get a little bit more um than the original two twenty. Was that helpful? Did I answer your question?
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next section seventy ones, which is our equipment section. So overall, again, equipment, uh, this is where like our computer equipment is, some of our security equipment, furnitures and fixtures. I'm thinking we'll spend just about everything in there as well. Have a little bit of money left over, not a ton, a slight amount, but it will help offset uh some of the other areas. All right, so let's go all the way down to kind of the box on the bottom. So as of right now, I'm looking at, we're gonna have about a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars remaining at the end of this fiscal year, if everything uh works out the way that I am forecasting. Again, that's giving just over five million dollars back to the city. So a hundred and six thousand dollars left. I just wanna be super, super clear, as I've mentioned many times, I feel like a broken record at this point, but I am watching this extremely closely. I've been working with Dr. Andre and the team. Uh, special revenue, contract services and out of district, right? As soon as, as soon as I see anything change compared to what I have in front of you today as this data point, we will start to move money and continue to move money to special revenue. If for some reason we need more money in special revenue, we'll come forward and let the team know. If, for some reason, we need more money in Special Revenue, we'll come forward and let the team know. The good news is, there's money there and available, uh, in Special Revenue. We've actually collected more revenue this year than what we actually anticipated coming in. We already have about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars more collected than what we originally anticipated. So that's good news, cuz if we ha, continue to have more cost, we potentially could offset it in Special Revenue. But I'll keep you folks posted next month.
That's the money that comes in from Brentwood and the signs, signs of learning, is that what it is?
Exactly, yep, Brentwood, Signs of Learning, and then some other programs.
That's great that we have a program that, that is that strong, that people want to come here and are willing to pay us for. I like that.
Absolutely. Questions? I know that was a ton of information. Mr. Claffey left, cuz it was so overwhelming. Uh, I don't have any questions. You, Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I do have a question, but I know that it's not something that we could have the answer for today. But I was looking to see how the electricity, we put in all the solar panels all over, and how that reduced, and how that is gonna show up in our budget, cuz I know that it comes back, and I know that there was also, um, some money that comes back from the internet that we, you, you.
Oh, with the, we agree with the city to share costs and stuff?
No, so, so like, you know, um, the guy from the I.
Oh, yes.
Came in and said that there was something there too, so I was just wondering, like, how is, how's that going? So the guy that came in from the IT department, I, just an update, you know what I'm saying? Not for today, you know what I'm saying, just those two things, because those were positive improvements that we made that we should highlight.
Yep, yeah, so some of it, uh, related to the technology pieces, either E-rate, or we did put in a newer telephone voice system, right? And I think that was supposed to, my understanding, based off of my predecessor, was by us putting that in, it should be saving us some money. In fairness, I haven't seen a savings quite yet, uh, related to the telephone voice, but E-rate money is coming in, um, based off of some of the enhancements and stuff that we are doing. But we absolutely, uh, can follow up on the solar. Based off of my forecast and what I've seen, I actually did budget the electricity to be fairly similar to prior year. But it potentially could be lower, based off of some of that savings, but we can absolutely, I can look at it, and we can have it available for next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. I think Dr. Andre.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Andre.
I just wanna, uh, make a comment and really, uh, commend Mr. Gray, and then even for, like, a year ago, Ms., Mr. Donovan, when we were preparing this budget. So a hundred thousand dollars seems like, you know, hey, it's a hundred thousand dollars. It's, you know, just quick math, it's less than one percent of the overall budget, right? Of the hundred, if you take out the benefits, right? So if you look at our hundred and thirty-one million, thereabouts, and to have, you know, like, it seems like a hun, like a big number, a hundred and thirty-one million dollars, and then to be within one percent of that forecast, right? So again, our budget is really a forecast of what happens. And then through the budget transfers, and able to operate, uh, a district with, you know, ten thousand students, you know, transporting, you know, seven thousand kids, three, two times a day, feeding kids three times a day, just the overall, um, operations of the budget to be, um, within about a hundred thousand dollars is pretty remarkable, so I just wanna commend, um, Crystal and her team, the Finance and Operations Subcommittee, to allow us to make these transfers and, um, provide the, the resources for our kids, so. It just, uh, it's, a hundred thousand dollars is a little scary right now, it's keeping me like, a little nervous, but I'm really confident in Crystal and her team, and F and O for making the budget work.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes when you talk about the numbers, it just blows my mind. It's a big responsibility, and, um, you know, and, and you, Mr. Gray, taking it on. I, I could, I could never, never, I can't even handle my own, my own budget at home. So, um, so I'm really glad that we have you, and I know that, um, Mr. Donovan spoke so highly of you when he was here. I'm sure that he, um, still feels the same way, so he did a good job. So, yeah. All right, well, um.
I'd like to raise a motion.
You wanna make, you wanna make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Can I ask, are we gonna talk about the, um, schedule for the summer?
Thank you, yes.
Do we do that after we adjourn, or before?
I mean, we could do it before, I don't think everyone needs to know. Okay, so Ms. Daniels-Williams, and I'll second the motion to adjourn, and everyone in favor say aye?
I don't understand what just, I thought we needed to talk about the schedule for the summer.
Yeah, but I thought we would talk about it off, off air.
Is that, can we do that? For transparency's sake? I don't know, I don't know the rules on that one.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah, it, it, it's just really the coordination, so whether it's through Ms. Cancela to look at your dates to schedule it that way is the cleanest, or don't adjourn yet, and then just talk about your schedule.
Okay, well, we can talk about the schedule.
I'm in favor of clean. I second that motion to adjourn.
And then I would just.
And it will post it anyway, so.
And then we just, we'll schedule it through Ms. Cancela.
Just don't wanna get sued.
Okay, um, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is, um.
Seven twenty-one?
Seven twenty-one, thank you, thank you, thank you, okay, so we are adjourned, thank you.